Good evening. It is 7:01. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Hershey? Councilmember Colacetti? Councilmember Bishop? Councilmember Wilkin?
Here.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Thank you.
First item of business is approval of minutes from the previous meeting. May I have a motion for August 11, 2025, for the City Council meeting minutes and August 18, 2025, for the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes?
I move approval of those two minutes.
Second.
Move by James, seconded by Grace. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Are there any additions to the agenda tonight? Staff has their heads down, so I'm going to take that as a no. Presentations and public input. We have two proclamations tonight. The first one will be the National Co-Responder and Crisis Responder Week proclamation. Mayor?
All right. Good evening. All right. Whereas, the city of Urbana, Illinois continues to address the growing and urgent need for mental health and substance use services in our community. And whereas, mental health and substance use challenges, if left unaddressed, can contribute to avoidable homelessness, incarceration, emergency room visits, and frequent 911 calls, all of which are intrusive, traumatic, and costly for individuals and communities than timely preventative behavioral health interventions. And whereas, the city of Urbana has proactively acknowledged the critical need for accessible mental health crisis, support and has identified innovative community-based models such as co-responder units and mobile crisis teams. They are effective, they are as effective tools to respond compassionately and appropriately to residents in crisis. And whereas, the Urbana Police Department, in partnership with Rosecrans Health Network, established a crisis co responding program in 2021 to embed trained mental health clinicians directly with law enforcement, enabling collaborative, on-the-scene interventions to provide the right care at the right time, diverting individuals from jail or the emergency room, and instead connecting them with supportive services and long-term care. And whereas, the Rosecrans Mobile Crisis Response Team further expands this model by deploying clinicians and crisis case managers to conduct mental health screenings, assessments, and direct connections to resources such as counseling, medication management, housing assistance, and other essential services, significantly reducing the need for emergency or law enforcement responses and improving individual outcomes. And whereas, the city of Urbana's Crisis Co-Response Team currently includes two co-responder positions, a behavioral health detective embedded within the Urbana Police Department, and a licensed social worker from the Rosecrans Health Network, together providing coordinated trauma-informed response to individuals in crisis. And whereas, Crisis Co-Responders and Crisis Responder Week is a time to honor and recognize the essential work of these professionals, highlight the value of partnership between behavioral health and public safety systems, and reaffirm our community's commitment to promoting mental wellness, compassionate care, and public safety for all Urbana residents. Now, therefore, I, DeShawn Williams, Mayor of the city of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of September 15 through the 21st, 2025, as National Co-Responder and Crisis Responder Week in the city of Urbana, Illinois.
Next up is the Welcome Week 2025 proclamation.
All right, I'm back. All right. Whereas, our city, our city thrives as a product of our unique capacity to welcome the contributions and spirit of entrepreneurship of all people, regardless of race, gender, creed, or country of origin. And whereas, it is important to mark the opportunities where we can come together as one community and extend a message of positivity. And whereas, immigrants make up to 12.4% of the population of Champaign County, Illinois, comprising a large and growing share of our local economy and contributing greatly to the cultural richness of our local landscape. And whereas, the University of Illinois brings a unique, brings us unique opportunities to engage with residents from around the world, with thousands of students hailing from more than 100 countries. And whereas, the cities of Champaign and Urbana are committed to working together with immigrant families to develop a welcoming community that leverages the full potential of all who live here, capitalizing on diverse perspectives, cultures, and talents, from knowledge, creativity, and innovation to thrive. And whereas, we join the welcoming Champaign County Collaborative to encourage the citizens of the cities of Champaign and Urbana to recognize the importance of working together in order to create and support strong, secure, and successful places to live, work, and play. Now, therefore, we, Deborah Frank Finan, Mayor of the city of Champaign, and DeShawn Williams, Mayor of the city of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim September 12 through the 21st, 2025, as Welcoming Week in the cities of Champaign and Urbana, Illinois. Thank you.
All right, now, we will start the portion of public input. If you would like to address the body this evening, please step forward and state your name for the record. You have five minutes.
My name is Dennis Sears. I'm addressing the half-staffing of Urbana flags recently. On Wednesday, September 10, 2025, the President issued a proclamation called Honoring the Memory of Charlie Kirk. This proclamation directed that flags be flown at half-staff through Sunday, September 14. Flags were already scheduled to fly at half-staff the next day for Patriots Day, September 11. Being about town on Friday, the 12th, I noticed that the city flags were still at half-staff. I checked the city website but couldn't find anything indicating why this was so. I called the city's executive department and left a message with my query. Then, since it was Friday afternoon, and I couldn't stomach the idea of not addressing the situation with the weekend starting, I decided to just go over to City Hall and see if I couldn't find out exactly what was going on. I found a person in the city clerk's office who helpfully, helpfully called upstairs to Bridgette Royhan, who came downstairs with copies of the President's proclamation and explained that procedurally, the city had no choice other than to follow the proclamation. Later, I received a call back from someone in the executive department, I can't recall her name, who further explained that the city gets fed these proclamations through the website halfstaff.org, and that the procedure is meant to minimize purely political considerations. Later still, I found that Governor Pritzker had issued his own proclamation on Friday asking that state flags be lowered for victims of political violence. It is clear that the President's proclamation violates the prescriptive intent and spirit of Section 7, subsection M of the U.S. Flag Code. In this subsection, the code specifies the principal figures for whom the honor is intended, essentially specific federal and state office holders, foreign dignitaries, members of the judiciary, and military and first responders who have died in the course of performing their duty. There isn't a section for racist homophobic grifting Christian nationalist bloggers who plead the Fifth in regard to their role in the January 6, 2021 insurrection. Moreover, Kirk was an unelected critic of empathy, the Civil Rights Acts of the 1960s, and Martin Luther King Jr., and was awarded, and he was awarded a full four days at half-staff, which is statutorily speaking, twice the length of time accorded for a member of Congress when they die. The flag code itself, despite its incorporation into U.S. legal code, is essentially advisory. There are, for example, no penalties attached for violations of its suggested conduct regarding the flag's construction, display, and the respect thereto, nor for the pledge of allegiance or conduct during the National Anthem. In Dimmitt versus City of Clearwater, 1993, the 11th Circuit held that, quote, "The operative provisions of the statute consistently use the term 'should' and not 'shall' when describing the proper manner for display of the flag." Nonetheless, the President's proclamation, by extending this honor customarily otherwise reserved for elected representatives, judges, and real heroes, diminishes a cultural consensus. Moreover, in his own conduct, which has included such violations of the code as signing flags, saluting it during the anthem, expressly reserved for members of the military or veterans, or using it for his commercial products, the President has shown nothing but contempt for the idea that the flag belongs to anyone but himself. Therefore, as we can likely expect further abusive and politicized stunts from the President, I would like to ask that the city reexamine its approach to half-staff proclamations. Perhaps, for example, a more literal application of the flag code itself could be employed as a way to screen for proclamations might be beyond the pale. I worry that the cynical manipulation of the code more generally conveys a message of disrespect for the law. In particular, I think it may inculcate a message that the rule of law is weak if the law itself is subservient to and manipulated by those besotted with power. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ron Kester. I live at 1209 West Oregon Street. I just wanted to express support for the surveillance resolution that you're going to be talking about this evening. I know that you've gone through this for quite some time, and I appreciate the work and labor, intellectual labor, and the kind of courage it takes to do this sort of thing at this moment in history. I think that in addition to seeing the kind of irresponsible behavior that we're seeing from Washington, now is a time when we need to be vigilant about protecting our own authority, about how we use equipment, and what we do with citizens' data. And as the crisis of ALPRs in the state of Illinois proceeds, I think we need to keep in mind that what we need to do is to secure all of the authority that we can locally as possible. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Jessica Yassine. I'm a resident of Urbana. I was actually just coming just as a parent with a child in, at Urbana High School. The light at Washington and Vine Street, it's a four-way stop sign. I have concerns about that because, first of all, we're dealing with a lot of new drivers. Our juniors and seniors there are pretty new drivers, and I've seen myself, when I'm going there, my daughter goes to the middle school there. Every time I go through there, adults too, it's not just the teenagers, I think we're probably the bigger offenders, offenders. But I'm seeing a lot of people running the stop sign, or two people can't figure out who was there first. And I really wanted to ask that we, that you consider getting a light put at Washington and Vine Street, mainly because of the fact that it is where our high school's at, our only high school, and it is, it has our vulnerable drivers, our teenage drivers there who really don't, may not know exactly what they're doing right away in the very, the early years. The second thing... Oh, yeah, yeah. The second thing I wanted to bring up. I don't know how much power you have over this, but you know, OSF has closed down, or it's closing down. I've always been a Carl person. When I used to, so first of all, I have a disability. Every month I have to go to Carl, I have to go get infusions done for my health, and I used to be able to park there for free because I have a disabled placard. I went there, my last time, um, last month, I went there and they had just started that day where I went to go park, and not only did they not honor the disabled placard anymore, they had tripled the price of what it would have cost without a disabled placard. And I refused to pay. I was like, I'm not paying. I did not know about this and no, and I didn't have cash on me either. So I didn't pay and someone else took care of it, whatever. The thing is, though, is that it's not about me being, first of all, it was ignorant of me. I, I should have paid, but I was pretty ticked off. I just got out of my, my infusion, whatever. The thing is, though, is that this is not just about me. We're talking about other people that are there for, they're there for, like infusion is just alone. There's a lot of people there. There's people there for other things that they need help for, and then they, they don't have the free passes anymore, nothing. And I just feel like Carl has taken advantage of our community because now this is our only hospital. It's like, oh, OSF is gone. Pay it or what are you going to do, right? So I don't know exactly what power you have over that, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, if there's something you speak to them about, because literally, I, I, I think it's very crooked, and I think it's, and especially since we're talking about mental health care and things like that, it's just another expense and another way to harm our community when we're trying to go and get the health care we need, and then no, and then you're taking advantage of the other hospital leaving. That's really all I had to say. But the light, that's really important to me, but as a mom of a teenage boy, the first one's probably a little bit more important for me. Thank you so much.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the body tonight? I don't believe we have any, anything to read. I didn't see anything. All right, so moving on, is there a staff report this evening? All right, for new business, we're going to start with ordinance number 2025-09025, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number two omnibus. Is Elizabeth presenting? Yes.
Actually, Don's got this one. I've got the next one.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Before you tonight is the budget amendment number two for the fiscal year 26 budget. This is largely a routine omnibus budget, budget amendment that does two things. It rebudgets previously budgeted items that weren't spent last year, and it provides funding for one piece of IT hardware that needs replacement. So first, on the rebudget in the general fund, some equipment line items were, that are budgeted the same each year, but the timing of purchases doesn't always line up with the fiscal year. So this amendment rebudgets about $120,000 across departments to account for that. And in addition, we're rebudgeting just under $7,000 for police uniform items provided by the city, and about $14,000 for required periodic physical exams for police officers. And since these amounts were budgeted last year but not spent, so there's no effect on fund balance. And then second part, this amendment increased the IT budget by about $13,500 to replace the email archive hardware, and that device will reach end-of-life in February, and timely replacement ensure continuity of email archiving and compliance with record retention requirements. And then from a fiscal standpoint, this amendment has no impact on the general fund balance. The estimated unsecured fund balance is still the same at $12,022,000, or about 25.16% of recurring expenditures, and that's $78,000 above the minimum requirement. And I also note that this amount excludes $5.4 million reserved for at-risk federal grants and funds that are already set aside for the community engagement team program. Stop recommendation is to forward this budget amendment for approval at the next council meeting, and passage will require six affirmative votes, including the mayor. And thank you, and we'll happy to be, to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? James?
Thank you. I have a question about the, the email server or archive replacement. Did we not know that this was going to go end-of-life when we were creating our budget in April and May?
I think it probably was knowable, but since we did not have our request to include it in the budget, I'm not sure that that was picked up as we were working on the budget.
So I guess I would ask that, it's a small amount, so it probably seems like not a big deal, but all of those capital expenditures and technology, the roadmap for their age and when they go out of compliance, either for operating system or hardware, is something that could, we could have a map for so that we could budget these kinds of things at least a year in advance?
Yeah, we just had a recent conversation about that. That's part of the, one of the purposes of having IT set up as an internal service fund is that they have a separate fund balance they can reserve for the, so those things. So we're going to make sure to update the whole kind of long-term plan for when those, those things are due for replacement as we go into the next budget schedule. We all, already have a meeting scheduled to talk about that.
Okay, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Grace?
Thank you. I had two questions, I think, kind of along that same train of thought, because I hear that this has no impact on the general fund, but it is reducing the fund balance for just the IT fund. Is that correct? Okay. Head nods, see if you're on the screen. Okay, that makes sense. And just as we're talking about the fund balance from the general fund, if it's not inconvenient, if it is, which totally fine, but I'd be curious what's kind of like the ballpark range of fund balances in some of the other funds as we're kind of looking at big picture. Just because I find it a little more reassuring as we're talking about the general fund reserves being so low, that there are other departments that have some of their own reserves for when things like this come up.
So we generally don't have very specific policies for other funds. The general fund is the place that pays for most of our basic city operations, right? So it's very important to make sure that that's sustainable, that we're never gonna face a situation where we can't sustain those operations. And also, the general fund tends to be the major source of fund for those, some of those other funds. So as an example, we'll talk about our, our risk management fund, where we have substantial observes, substantial reserves for liability and workers' compensation claims, but that is funded by transfers from other activities that have staff, which is largely what generates claims, and that is mostly coming from the general fund. So that's why we really focus on the general fund.
Makes sense. Just if it's not inconvenient, I was just curious, like, if, if we were to combine ballpark some of our other fund reserves and individual funds, is it like $100,000 or like 5 million? And I understand the liability one is maybe a bunch bigger chunk. And if it's not convenient to look into that, that's understandable.
Yeah, it's millions. There's a chart in the front of the budget book that, that goes through that, and we're actually going to publish the final budget book here very soon. But it goes through the revenues, expenses, and fund balances in all of the funds.
Awesome. Thank you. And then I just had a procedural question where I think we have five voting people tonight. How we handle that?
Sure. So this evening, we are at Committee of the Whole, so it is not final action. So the, I will also triple check with the attorney, but I would think that we are fine since we are not actually adopting it this evening. We are just simply making a motion to forward it for further consideration this evening.
That's my interpretation, yes. Yeah, that's consistent with my, my interpretation.
All right, well, I would entertain a motion. James?
I'll make a motion to refer ordinance number 2025-09-025, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number two omnibus, to City Council for approval on the regular agenda.
Second.
All right. Move by James, seconded by Grace. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, that moves forward. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next up is ordinance number 2025-09026, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $5.2 million in general obligation bond, Series 2025. And this one's yours, Elizabeth. Yes?
Yes, it is mine, but I want to thank Don because he did virtually all of the legwork on this. So as, as you know, there's a long history around the redevelopment of the Hotel Royer. I'm, I'm not going to recite the whole history. There are a whole bunch of previous council actions listed in the report, but most recently in May, I think it was, the city council approved a loan from the general fund to the TIF fund to pay the development incentive with the intent of then repaying that by issuing bonds. It was just, just really a timing thing. And so the final, the original, well, it was amended multiple times, but at one point in time, the incentive was 5.5
the incentive was $5.5 million. And then as we got to the end, there were some penalties for failing to meet deadlines. So the incentive that we paid to the developer was $5.2 million. Because of some of the specific terms contained in the development agreement, we are not able to issue tax-exempt debt for this purpose. So this will be taxable debt, which will carry a higher interest rate. We have been working with Chapman, who is our bond counsel out of Chicago, and also R.W. Baird, who is acting as our placement agent for these bonds. We believe that it's likely that we'll have at least three bids for the bond, and just based on their current assessment of the market, and the market changes rapidly, we think it's possible that we could come in at something around or slightly under a 5% interest rate for a nine- or 10-year term. So the reason I say nine or 10 years is that we have at least one bidder who is not interested in a 10-year term, but would consider a nine-year term. So we're going to leave the option open for them to bid that, and we would have to compare that against other bids that we received to see if that is advantageous to the city. Let me see. Oh, all of the bidders, as you probably know, I think we talked about this when we issued the fire station bonds, all of the financial institutions with whom we work have to be certified by the Human Rights Commission. So we have three potential bidders who are currently certified. It's possible that other bidders could certify at the October meeting, although based on our experience with the fire station bonds, I think that's probably unlikely, since we did not have additional bidders at that time for those tax-exempt bonds. And also, I think if our placement agent were to come to us and say, you know, once this ordinance is passed, was to say, gosh, we're seeing something coming down the road that's really going to shift the market, and you could potentially pay a much higher interest rate, we might decide to proceed sooner, even without having additional bidders certified. So I could bore you with a whole bunch of details, but I don't know that you want to hear that, so I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions. Chris?
Thanks, Elizabeth. So just to kind of organize everything, so we've currently got a construction loan for nine years and $9 million for the fire stations, right?
Correct. It was originally 10. I think we're about half a year into it.
Yeah, yeah. And it was about $200,000 of interest per year.
Sounds about right.
Yeah. Now, this is a 5.2. I do remember seeing paperwork when we were negotiating with Hotel Royer over the years, that when they were eligible for 5.5, that with the interest, it was going to be a $6.9 million endeavor. And you probably don't have it because it was old paperwork I'm remembering here.
Yeah, I don't have it.
Don't worry about it. Well, what I'm getting at is, and maybe this is premature to ask you this, because you're still accepting bids to make the actual loan, and that is that what will be the interest per year on this? Do we have any sense for that yet? Probably not.
No, give me one second. So of course, it's going to depend on the final interest rate on the bonds, which we won't know until we bid the bonds. And interest is going to vary over the life of the loan. So as you probably know, for example, with a home mortgage, you pay more interest in the earlier years, and then in later years, you're paying more principal and less interest. So just think about it like a mortgage. But we think for a 10-year term, we may pay up to about $1.6 million in interest over the life of the bonds. And over a nine-year term, maybe $1.35.
Okay, thank you.
Grace?
Thank you. I have a few questions, but one off of that one in particular. So you said estimated interest, about $1.6 million total. And I was trying to make sense of the table in Exhibit A for this item in the packet, and where there's columns for the 2025 bonds, and then the bonds. And there's like 9 million, and 5.2 million, and 14 million total, and just not making sense of that table.
So what you're looking at in Exhibit A is information that we're providing to potential bidders about the city of Urbana. So you're looking there at our current outstanding debt, which is for the fire stations, right? So Exhibit A isn't about the bonds that we're going to issue, it's about the bonds that are already outstanding.
Okay. And then if I may, I guess I'm big picture here, trying to understand why Central TIF is not the source for these funds. And I do apologize, because I think I've asked you this before, and I tried to search my emails for some more information there, but just to my understanding, that seems to be the purpose of the TIF.
So are you asking why is Central TIF not the source of funds for the 5.2 million, or for the repayment? Or both?
For the 5.2 million, then we wouldn't need a repayment, right? We wouldn't be taking out bonds if we could take it from TIF.
Correct. So first of all, the reason that Central TIF is not the source of funds for the initial 5.2 million is that it's a relatively new TIF. And so early in the life of the TIF, there hasn't been opportunity to generate the revenue that would be sufficient to pay incentive of that amount. So when it comes to repaying the bonds, we estimate that the revenue streams that are generated by the hotel will be sufficient, or nearly sufficient, to repay the bonds. So for example, when the hotel is fully assessed, it will generate a property tax increment, and that will go into the TIF, and we'll take that, and we'll use it to repay the bonds. It's generating hotel motel tax, boutique hotel tax, food and beverage tax, and those will all be used to repay the bonds.
Yeah, I saw that in the memo, but it looks like in the contract, there was something that I was interpreting as saying that we are holding this against the entire taxing body of the city.
Yes. So these will be taxable general obligation bonds. And what makes a bond a general obligation bond is that it's backed by the city's taxing authority. And so as a result, we get a lower interest rate. And so you saw this also with the fire station bonds, where in the bond ordinance, it says, okay, county clerk, for the next 10 years, you're going to levy these amounts to pay the debt service on the bonds. You've also seen this in the tax levy process, not for a couple of years, because we repaid all our old bonds a while ago, but when we're levying taxes, we will pass a resolution abating those taxes, where we say, okay, county clerk, we know we told you in our bond ordinance to levy taxes for this, but in fact, we have the money over here to pay it, so you don't need to levy those taxes. And that just happens. We do that routinely as part of the tax levy process.
Thank you. And that's more on Central TIF, but I don't know if you want me to hold off if there are other questions.
Are there other questions before I let Grace continue? Go for it, Grace.
Thank you. I was just trying to understand Central TIF a little better, and I hear the answer that it's newer, but I also recall that we transferred some funds, and I was looking it up, I believe it's page 217 of our draft budget for FY '26 that's online. And so one question is, it looks like we had contractual services expenditures in FY ' '25 for Central TIF of $7.5 million. And I was wondering what we spent that on.
You're talking about we had or we budgeted?
So when I'm looking at that page, the column for FY '25 budget for expenses contractual services says 8.3 million budgeted, and FY '25 estimate is 7.5 million.
So I would say the budget is speculative, and I think at the time we prepared the budget, we thought it likely that we would be porting funds from TIF IV as it ended into Central TIF. And I am not sure that is correct anymore, but if we did that, the purpose of porting funds would be to pay for development projects.
I think for next week, I would definitely appreciate a little more information on what we spent $7.5 million on in Central TIF last year, just because I didn't recall a big things. I could imagine maybe some of our downtown properties.
Yeah, the biggest part of this 7.5 would be the 5.2 million, because we loaned the money from the general fund to the TIF fund to pay the 5.2 million incentive. So the vast majority of the 7.5 that we would have spent, and the budget would have been an estimate of the spending, would be the 5.2 million incentive.
Okay, and so you're saying the 5.2 million, we've already transferred from the general fund to Central TIF, and then already given it to Hotel Royer?
Correct. We did that after the council approved the inner fund loan, which I think happened in May. We paid the incentive in June when they met all the requirements in the agreement.
And that's why it's still in FY '25 fiscal year?
Correct. It happened before June 30th, so it was last fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you. That's making a little more sense. So that's already in there. And then the FY '26 proposed column, there's 5.2 million for miscellaneous revenues, and there's 5.1 million for transfers in. And I wasn't understanding why there's 5 million in there twice going in.
So they're not the same number. So the 5.2 million is the proceeds from the bond issuance. The 5.1 was probably the amount we thought perhaps we would port from TIF IV to Central TIF at the end of the life of TIF IV.
In which we're not certain of now, because the other option would be to extend TIF IV, is that right? Typically, you extend or transfer TIF.
I think it's unlikely that we would extend TIF IV. I don't think that's going to happen, but I would say that I think it's still, and maybe Darius wants to speak to this, it's still a little unclear what's going to happen as we wind up TIF IV.
So, excuse me. So as of now, we will not be moving forward with the extending to IV. We do have funds in TIF IV that we'll be using for the Cunningham corridor study, as well as anything left from there would then be ported over. So it could be some funds, but it won't be anywhere near the 5 million.
So that will probably not actually be in the budget? Kind of scratch off that 5.1 million for transfers in?
Well, it's in the budget now, so one of the things we've been talking about is a need to do a budget amendment to clean up TIF IV and Central TIF as we reach the end of TIF IV. So we've been having internal discussions about what that's going to look like, but we're still working on that.
Thank you. Is there the option to pay off the bonds early? I guess I don't know if it works like that, like with other loans, like can you pay it off to avoid interest? Or is that not how the bonds work?
So sometimes, yes, if there's a call feature. I do not think we ask for a call feature on these bonds, because we don't anticipate that the revenue from the hotel would support paying them off early. So for example, our fire station bonds do have a call feature, like at eight or nine years, something like that.
Okay, thank you. I think that was my questions for now.
All right. So one question I had is, is I know that there was the boutique hotel tax, the food and service tax. To the best of my knowledge, the restaurant at Hotel Royer is not breakfast, lunch, and dinner right now. Is there any update in terms of the restaurant operations?
It is breakfast, lunch, and dinner currently. I had lunch there last week.
All right, sorry. In the early days, it wasn't, so. Okay. Are we able to look at any of those revenues that have come in, seeing as they're very young, to see how we are doing in terms of our projections?
So we have been looking internally. We generally don't share specific individual taxpayer information publicly. We have been keeping an eye on it, and Don has been working on the estimates of the revenue streams to pay off the bonds. But yeah, for any new venture, it's really hard to get a feel in the early days. Like, for example, we were just talking about even the hotel motel tax is a little hard to know, but now that we've had a couple of football weekends, we're getting a better feel for what that's going to look like.
Okay, all right, thank you. Grace?
Thank you. So I found a couple more questions. One, just logistical question. There's some exhibits, like B through D, that just say, like, form a bond counsel opinion, but those are like the only five words on the page?
Correct. They put them in there as placeholders to show that those will be part of the final document, but the bond counsel opinion would be issued later, closer to the time we issued the bonds.
And would, will council have an update? I think that was in the table, that we'll have an update on how things go with the bonds, but not a vote?
Correct. So we're asking you to take the vote next week. This ordinance establishes the parameters. And what this does, it gives authority for us to go ahead and pull the trigger, because there's a very tight window that when the bonds are bid, they generally want a commitment within a day, like same day even. And so this allows us to act quickly to get the best deal for the city, and then we would report back and tell council, well, here's what happened as a result of the bidding. Here's the interest rate we obtained.
Thank you. And then another question was how we were planning to pay for some of the other TIF agreements that we've executed, like in the past year or so. Like, is that also planned from bonds, or do we anticipate to have enough TIF revenue to fund those?
So we do not have any specific plans to issue more debt at this time. Not that it won't happen eventually, it will happen, but no specific plans.
Like, for example, I think there were at least two businesses that we've approved agreements with for TIF funding.
Correct. And there is some revenue in the Central TIF fund to support those agreements, so we wouldn't be recommending them if they couldn't be supported from the TIF fund. So it's not that there's no revenue, there's not 5.2 million.
Yeah, but those future ones are planned to be paid for out of TIF funds, not bonds?
Correct.
Because it looks like from the proposed budget, that the Central TIF ending fund balance would be 5.6 million, but that's with the 5.1 from Cunningham, right? So we could think of it really as like half a million in that fund balance without Cunningham IV.
I'll have a better picture when we work through all the details of closing out TIF IV and we do the budget amendment, but yeah, it won't be that big.
Okay. And I just didn't recall, I thought maybe what we had promised in funding was more than that, but I'm not sure the total is in the timelines. But I'd be curious, kind of our TIF funding plan, kind of Central TIF, kind of like big picture roadmap, like what are we promising? What are we saving for? What are we spending it on?
Right, yeah. And I think that's partly what we're thinking too, as we're preparing to create that budget amendment, like what is the plan? What are we going to be doing in the next year? And then we need to map that out into the future as well for future budgets.
Thank you.
Chris?
And this is for anybody that knows, is it on the website, the maps of the TIF districts?
Yeah, I believe they are, because I know that that's where I've found them in the past, but I couldn't tell you the exact link.
And I've seen, I've looked for these maps, and I found them, I thought. I just want to double-check. They're probably there. But are they current? I mean, now that we're shifting out of IV to Central and all that?
Well, they should be. I mean, there may be a TIF IV map out there, and TIF IV will cease to exist at the end of the year, but...
Okay, so when I see TIF IV, I should say, oh, that's going away, right?
Correct. So TIF IV will end on December 31st. To the extent that we have obligations that have already been made, we can continue to use those funds to meet those obligations. So for example, if we have a development agreement and that's not complete at that point, we can still hold those funds to use to meet those obligations.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, I suggest you Google Urbana TIF district, and you'll get a lovely map.
You've got it right there.
I got it right there. If there aren't any further, yes, James?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that the TIF districts don't change over time, so if you have a look at the TIF IV district, those boundaries don't change. They've stayed the same.
They can be amended from time to time, but you would know, because council would have to be part of the process.
We have not been amending them, at least over the last five years. I think it's important to mention that we're talking about projects that have been funded by Central TIF, and those are the one associated with the adventures in time and space, the golf course, indoor mini-golf that's being expanded, and Fernies High Horse, which is the redevelopment. mini golf that's being expanded, and Ferny's High Horse, which is the redevelopment of the iron post and the building next to it. And those expenses are not of the range of what we invested in getting the Hotel Royer back in place. They're much smaller, so it does make sense how they will fit into what the revenue stream is for the Tiff district. And of course, when we issue the bonds, we are going to get that money to begin with, and that will fill the gap as we pay it off over time. So, it may seem like it's closer than it is, but it is something that we've been talking about as we've been going through this experience of the Hotel Royer and the addition of these two additional projects in Central Tiff for the last three or four years. Thanks.
All right. If there are no other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. If I can pull my information up in front of me. I'll move ordinance number 2025-09-026, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $5.2 million general obligation bond, Series 2025, to City Council for regular agenda for approval.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Moved by James, seconded by Grace. Discussion. Grace?
Thank you. I appreciate clarifying some of the information here, and still for next week, would appreciate any more details that we can have about Central Tiff, last year's spending, and kind of future outlook and commitments. If it's not clear from some of the questioning, I definitely think that we should be using Tiff funds for these kinds of capital investment projects whenever possible, and seems to be the whole idea of them. I think it's really unfortunate if we have to waste $1.6 million in interest on these bonds. At this point, I guess it's a little too late. I think that was some of my misunderstanding earlier on in this process. And at this point, we've already transferred, we've already given stuff. It seems to be the option ahead, but I do hope that we can avoid this, anything in the future, and be sure that we're managing Tiff funding so that we can use it for things like this.
James?
Yeah, I definitely agree with Grace that some illustration of the status of the Tiffs would be useful, as opposed to like description, some charts, Sankey charts are very useful to show how money is flowing into something and how it's going to flow out of it. It would be visual, and I think it would help all of us kind of understand what is going on with these various projects, and how what's coming in will meet or exceed what's going out.
All right. Any other discussion? Chris?
Yeah, I think I've talked about this before. This is interesting that, well, let me say, let me give you the background of what I'm about to say. I just left from a meeting at a church where homeless men came to inform the community what all the services they lack and need improvement on. So, I'll just say emotionally, I'm not in the mood to help a billion-dollar corporation with a $5.2 million loan. But aside from that, all those decisions were made in another council. I am glad the building is saved, that the Hotel Royer has, from the roof to the basement, to the pool, to the dining rooms, to every single room, they have taken everything back to studs, and they have repaired that building, spending probably over $30 million of their own money. So, I appreciate their effort of saving that building, and I will vote yes to this loan. But I would just want to flag the fact that this government is so willing to go into debt for stuff like fire stations and luxury hotels, and we're facing a tsunami, beginning in Washington, DC, with the lunatic king slashing and burning civilization, to taking revenge at a governor who threatens his Republican successor. And as the finance director has said in previous meetings, we are targeted, as a sanctuary city, for cuts. And so, you know, I don't know. We're going to be hurting for money, and we're going to be having requests, and housing, and poverty. There's a meeting tomorrow night about what the slash in food stamps, and what the slash in housing vouchers, and what the slash in CDBG funds, and all that. We're going to be stressed, to say the least. So, I just want to flag the fact that our priorities are going to be challenged, and you know, this is the last time I'm going to do a gravy gift to a rich corporation, that's for sure. But just, I don't know, it's babbling my feelings right now. Again, I'll do a reluctant yes for this, and I would like to see what Tiff... Oh, I got to mention one more thing. There's a lot of other businesses in town that are yelling at me, how do they get funding? And I think we've talked about this in private meetings. You know, we've got a business that needs their sewer repaired. We got, you know, a whole business district, I'll call it, a row of businesses that have no wayfaring sign, and they need signage directing customers to, you know, and they've made a tremendous investment in their buildings, and nobody knows where they are. So, and other businesses have yelled at me about, how are we promoting the downtown? We want to promote, we just got done with a special, by the way, it was a huge success, the South Philo Road, I'll call it a block party for now, but we have big plans for South Philo Road. Where's that money going to come from? You know, there's a lot of people wanting business loans, their business loans, and they're going to look at this Hotel Royer, why can't I get just a fraction of that? They gave it to Ferny Hyde Horse, they gave it to, you know, CU Adventures in Time. So, anyway, sorry for the rant, but that is some of the concerns I have going into this. Thank you.
All right. With that last comment, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that moves forward. Thank you very much, Dawn and Elizabeth. Appreciate it. Next up, we have Resolution Number 2025-09-075R, Resolution approving a grant agreement between, nope, sorry, my bad, number three, Ordinance Number 2025-09-027, and Ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Five, Article 13, Fire Prevention Code. Chief? No, it's okay. It's my fault.
Good evening. Mary Williams, Council, Madam Clerk. Urbana Fire Department is before you guys tonight, asking to have that ordinance amended. Just for a brief history, three years ago, City Council approved the ordinance that allowed the Urbana Fire Department to contract with Bryser, which is a third-party vendor that specializes in the compliance of fire and life safety systems. They require that all of the service providers for those fire and life safety systems report their inspections, installations, and repairs to that company on our behalf. In doing so, we named Bryser as the naming agency in the ordinance, and so we're asking that that be amended to remove Bryser as the named agency, remove the sunset clause, which was September 30th of this year, and that would also allow the ordinance to remain in effect going forward. And that's basically it, unless you guys have any questions.
Questions for the chief. Grace?
Thanks for the presentation. I was trying to understand what we're actually changing here.
Oh, what we're changing is, we're going to remove the name Bryser.
So, in like Section 1, the definition of records, that's in that Section 1 of the ordinance?
Just the name of the company. We're still going to have, we're still going to contract with a company that will provide the third-party reporting for us, but we don't need to have the name of a company in the ordinance. And then that way, we can also remove the sunset date, so the ordinance, we don't have to continue to come back year after year, or every three years to ask for the ordinance to remain in place.
Makes sense. So, as I'm still trying to understand, so like in the ordinance in front of us in Section 1, we have the definition of records, and it says, you know, that any company performing such inspections, is that where we replace the word Bryser with any company?
Yes.
And were there any other changes?
Just removing the sunset clause. The sunset clause and the fact that we couldn't move forward without counsel, would have to continue to modify or extend the action of council, would be needed for us to continue services with any company, and so we're asking for that to be removed as well.
I see. Thank you. Yeah, I was missing Attachment 1 that James had pointed me to, was yeah, I was looking for the markup version, and I had missed that one.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. I missed that. I think that answers my questions. Thank you.
All right, James?
Yeah, and just to clarify, since we don't want to use Bryser anymore, I assume that's why we're taking their name out of the ordinance. We may continue to use them for a while, or we may not, but a new contract with the company that is doing this will have to go through the normal purchase process, and if it meets a certain dollar amount, it will have to come to council for approval.
No, we are still using Bryser. We're just not naming a company in the ordinance. It's still a third-party agency, regardless of whoever we use. It's a contract that actually produces revenue for the city. It doesn't cost us anything. They charge the service providers to do the reporting, and so we get a quarterly report for revenue from the company.
But I assume if it changed to a place where we had to pay for it, then it would come back to us from an approval standpoint?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That's the clarity I was looking for.
Any other questions? All right, I'd entertain a motion.
I would move approval of Ordinance Number 2025-09-027, Ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Five, Article 13, Fire Prevention Code. Do we have anything on consent yet?
We do not.
I do consent. I guess I don't know if there's a point, if there's only one, but we can see.
Second.
All right. Moved by Grace and seconded by Chris. Discussion. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that moves forward to City Council. Thank you, Chief.
We appreciate it. And later, we can come back with a staff report and show some of the revenues and everything that we've got so far.
Yeah.
All right.
All right. The last item of new business is Resolution Number 2025-09-075R, Resolution approving a grant agreement between the State of Illinois, Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board, and the City of Urbana. The second chief of the evening.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. I want to take a moment to recognize my administrative assistant, Lisa Curtis. She went out of her lane and applied for this grant. Seems to be an easy lift. The Urbana Police Department is requesting City Council to approve a grant agreement between the State of Illinois, the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board, LSP. In early 2025, we applied for the fiscal year of 2025, a grant that covers cameras. It's a one-time reimbursement grant designed to support local law enforcement agencies with the purchase of officers' worn cameras, in-car systems, as well as secure storage, and all-related training. It appears that on August 28th of this year, we were notified of the award in the amount of $165,818.40. These funds will be fully reimbursable for the city for eligible expenditures that were already made in fiscal year '24 for body-worn cameras, in-car system cameras, as well as storage, infrastructure, and officer training. This reimbursement allows the city to recoup prior investments, to reallocate local resources to other essential public services. City staff recommends that City Council approve the resolution authorizing the grant agreement between the State of Illinois, the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board, and the city in said amount. Questions?
Questions. James?
So, thank you, Chief. So, this full amount is for expenditures we've already made in the equipment and the training? I assume the training is on the use of that specific equipment?
Yes.
Is related to the equipment?
Yes.
And the storage for retaining video and for whatever the records requires?
That's correct.
Okay, so this is essentially giving us back $165,000 that we've already spent that we could use in future?
Exactly.
Or take care of things that we were planning to buy that make things tight?
Wherever you need it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Other questions? Grace?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I was wondering if we have a plan for those rebudgeted funds, or how that works for department and exec finance?
Well, from my understanding, it's going to General Funds. I'll leave that up to Elizabeth to expound the pond.
Right. Since they're reimbursing us for money that we already spent in a prior fiscal year, for now, it's just going to sit in General Fund and get allocated through the budget process.
So, then we should expect the General Fund balance to increase by this $165,000?
Correct. You'll see that. We'll probably throw that in the next time we amend the budget, so you're not going to see that immediately in terms of the budget numbers until we do that, but... Okay, thank you.
James, did you have a question? No? Go for it.
All right. I'll move Resolution Number 2025-09-075R, a resolution approving a grant agreement between the State of Illinois, Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board, and City of Urbana, to City Council for approval on the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Moved by James and seconded by Grace. Discussion. Grace?
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify, I guess, not a question, but if it's incorrect, anyone feel free to jump in and correct it. But my understanding is that these are for body-worn or in-car cameras that are already required and/or regulated by state and federal law, and that we've already purchased and are already part of our operations, that these are not any additional new cameras that are being purchased?
That's correct. In order for us to be approved, all officers have to be in compliance with all state laws. All of our officers were in compliance with state mandates. Therefore, they award us the sum that you see before you.
Thank you.
James?
I would also like to thank Lisa Curtis for pursuing this and helping us by finding a grant that supports something we already did, and provides more funds for the city to give us just a little bit more elbow room on that General Fund that we already know is dangerously low in this particular year against our stated procedure. Thanks.
All right. With that, I will say, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, that moves on. Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is discussion, which is the Police Surveillance Technology Ordinance Number 2024-12-042. I believe Grace had sent some items, and Grace, did you want to talk about the items that you had sent through?
I would be happy to. I also need to request just a brief recess, like two minutes, because we'll break quorum when I get up to go to the bathroom, so...
Let's take a recess of five minutes, so everyone gets to go to the restroom. Thank you.
Thank you.
So yeah, I think this is our Section 7 exclusionary rule, deletion, destruction. So this Section B here, that notwithstanding the above.
But it's only in defense of a criminal prosecution. It's not necessarily in order to, right? That's what this says. It's only in defense of a criminal investigation, but it's not to support a criminal investigation. Lisa Tyre, right?
And then also, this is some of the ones. So within any specifics that we have shall be deleted or destroyed as soon as possible in accordance with state and federal laws. And just saying that, and remember that this is not just any data. This is data that is not approved. So say we have an unauthorized technology or bit of data information. This would be if there was unauthorized use of some technology that's not allowed as a technology at all. So that's created in contravention to this ordinance, meaning that if, say, a department wanted to start using facial recognition drones, but that was never, went through this process, it had never been approved, there was no policy, there was nothing about that, then that surveillance facial recognition drone footage wouldn't be given up voluntarily as evidence for any other purpose, and that we wouldn't use that kind of unauthorized information or data unless there was some other state or federal law that superseded it, or unless it was in a criminal defense, or as a complaint directly related to violating this ordinance itself. So this is not just all data. This is for only ones that are not authorized.
No, I get that. I'm just not sure about data deletion rules at this kind of level. I understand that basically this applies to anything that wasn't already approved, right? So if somebody goes off the rails and decides to get some kind of predictive policing thing and police, you know. I get that. I just don't know if we can legally say that we can delete that kind of information. I don't, that's up for the lawyers to discover.
And I don't know if you want to add anything, City Attorney? But I think that was how we did it, was as soon as possible in accordance with state and federal laws, that there may be some data retention requirements, depending on the different situations. And so that, you know, none of this is superseding any of those state or federal laws, but just saying that, you know, it just clearly lays out that the city can't just use some unauthorized surveillance technology and then use that for whatever purposes.
Well, sounds like Matt doesn't have any concern, so.
We wrote it broadly to encompass any potential exceptions that could come up. There are a lot. I think the Local Records Act in particular is going to be a primary guiding principle and what our obligations are under Local Records Act with regard to information like this, I think is subject to discussion with our Records Act representatives through the state agency. That would be part of an exchange. It's unclear, there's not a lot of case law on this sort of topic, but it's unclear whether our exclusion of a particular type of information obtained in a manner that's inconsistent with our own ordinance would be a reason that we could destroy preemptively data, that data that's collected. I think it's likely that the state's going to look at it in a more conservative fashion, but those are questions that we'd have to sort of sort out in a back-and-forth kind of manner with the state, case by case.
So in that case, sorry, go ahead, James.
I'm curious what conservative fashion means in this case. Does that mean erring on the side of keeping or deleting?
Yeah, conservative in the small C sense, in terms of erring on the side of requiring us to retain the information.
So, okay, conservative would mean, don't destroy it without clarity that you can.
Yeah, essentially without putting it through the normal process and having it approved for deletion.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I didn't want to derail you. I just remembered that was a question I had.
Yep, no, I appreciate it. I'm happy to take questions and thoughts along the way, and I can, oops, continue going through the table if we would like.
I do got a, just a statement. I want to say thank you for, I want to say thank you for providing the side-by-side. That was, that's a thing, for sure, so I appreciate that. But I wanted to ask a quick question. What's the current timeline for, like, keeping evidence and things of that, like, data and things of that nature? Is there?
So the City of Urbana has a record retention schedule that is approved by the State Records Division, where the hope is to actually revise our application, because I think our current application, which is, application is kind of a broad term. It's basically an index that says, like, okay, meeting minutes you have to keep forever, meeting videos you have to keep for this period of time, but it's literally all city records are in that application. It hasn't been revised in some time. It needs to be revised. But there are specific parameters for evidence and stuff with police. Police has, like, very specific records, and they, for some time, have been managing their own record retention process, but broadly, the process, it takes a long time. You have to submit, like, an individual application for record disposal before you can dispose of anything. Usually, they get returned the first couple of times. That's pretty common, and you have to, like, clarify. Sometimes we even have to get to the level of detail where you have to measure the amount of cubic feet of paper for a certain type of record for disposal. Like, it's a very administrative-heavy process. It takes, on average, like, six months to a year to go through a disposal process for records that are even in our index already. So it takes time.
Okay, thank you. All right, sorry.
No problem. Again, happy to have people stepping in with any questions or comments along the way. And on that, I will just say that I did have, there's some help in putting together this table from some generous community members with their time. And on the record retention and destruction piece, just wanted to say that, you know, in an ideal world, that wouldn't happen, because we wouldn't be using any unauthorized technology. So the only time that we really have to consider dealing with that whatsoever is if we're doing something that, you know, by the book shouldn't be done in the first place. We have a whole clause for exigent emergency circumstances that, you know, in an ideal scenario, there wouldn't be any reason to be using unauthorized stuff and have to try and deal with record deletion or retention. But if that were the case, that just lays out how we would handle it. Were there other comments or questions? Do you want me to go through the table?
James?
I just want to echo Mayor's comment that this comparison is very useful. The table is very useful, and I found it very helpful. Thank you.
Yes, me too. I had some disorganized notes, but again, a community member helped put it into this table, so you have them to thank for making it more organized than what I would have otherwise sent you. And this next set of table does similar, but I guess opposite thing, where it takes the Oak Park ordinance and then says, does Urbana have that piece and how does it align? So I think that overall, we have most of the things that Oak Parks does. Village Board approving funding for surveillance technology. Council already does that with the budget. I don't know that we need to have that in this ordinance or section of the code in particular. We both have approving new technology, approving existing technology, even in a different way, which we have in our Section 2A. We have that same idea. We don't explicitly say sharing data, but we say cross-referencing or new tools. I think it's pretty well-covered, but we could include a section on sharing data to need an allowance, but I think that's in each use policy, so I actually don't think it's necessary. And then again, just some of those same kinds of differences with the timing of approval and public input periods. They had explicitly that the Village Board in Oak Park can request revisions before approving or rejecting it. We don't expressly say that in Urbana's ordinance, but I think that's kind of the inherent right of council and something we commonly do.
I don't recall, it says individuals with surveillance technology can still share it with the police, and there's, I don't recall us talking about that, but there's an X there. Do we have that?
We do not. So again, this one is Oak Park on the left.
Right. And the reason I think of that is, we oftentimes will have the police department ask for ring, doorbell ring things, so I feel like we should include that. All right, that makes some sense to me.
Yeah, I think that's definitely a piece that hasn't been addressed in ours, of what about individual data, yeah.
Chris?
I think Champagne, and maybe Urbana, has a registration program where you can register your ring bell. And Chief, is that right? Yeah, he's nodding yes. You can, citizens can register their ring bells with the department, and they have on file already the permission to ask for the data, so.
James?
Yeah, I'll have to think about this, because my, my understanding is that these kinds of requests for, you know, the security tape at a place of business or ring are typically about a specific investigation, as opposed to, like, constantly being connected to it and taking information from it. So the former, and we've talked a lot about, we're not focusing on individual investigation kind of practices, which I think is how this is typically coming up.
Yes, yeah, I'd agree with you.
And I don't think there's currently a methodology for us to add private surveillance tools into our own, you know, intake. That would be surveillance, right? If I, if somebody could go look at my ring doorbell and see what's going on my street at any time, where they were getting that feed and doing something with that, that would be surveillance, as opposed to investigating a particular event. I want to, we had a car theft on Pell Circle at 10 o'clock that night. Do you have a ring recording that shows maybe the car leaving?
Yeah, this brings up something that we've discussed before, is the scope of the ordinance and the phrase of surveillance, is that, that kind of indiscriminatory usage of a technology that captures everybody, like a camera that watches everybody who comes into the city building? Or is, does it also apply to a specific investigation? We've had that back and forth here in council about that. And, I mean, based on what James is saying, there is a distinction between an ongoing specific investigation versus a kind of more general surveillance thing. Deshaun?
I was just going to say, but to what Chris was saying, you know, isn't that kind of up to that homeowner or that person if it's not, if they're not registered, you know?
Yeah, no, and I agree with you. I guess, I guess I'm not being very clear. I guess what I'm trying to understand is the scope of the overall ordinance, right? So is the scope of the overall ordinance, this very generic surveillance, and I know we're not getting into the definitions tonight, or are we targeting these technologies that anybody can be caught in the dragnet, right? Or are we going to make the delineation between something that's used during the course of an investigation, very specifically? Or are we going to make it broad, and it's just everything that falls under these types of technologies?
For example, it may be coming, but those 3,000 surveillance cameras on campus are going to be going toward a real crime center, a central place. They're going to be on all the time, and they can be monitored all the time. 3,000 cameras all over campus, and that's that dragnet you're talking about. So, I don't know, Grace, what did, what was your kind of intent and envisioning of systems that are just kind of floating in space and, you know, what access? And I guess we're just asking for awareness, right? We're just asking the Urbana Police Department to tell us, oh yeah, those LPRs on the highway, we use those. I mean, is that what you're asking the police?
Yeah, it has to be approved.
What has to be approved?
Anything that's defined as a surveillance technology has to be approved. That's how I read it. Grace?
Thank you. And, yeah, happy to get into some of the nitty-gritties of the definitions. I think I would propose that maybe we ideally get through some of the comparisons with Oak Park, and then what things we do agree on as far as procedural things, and then get into some of the nitty-gritties of definitions. It will be, you know, up to the majority of council to decide how we're going with all of this, but my thoughts are that as far as surveillance versus investigation tools, it's, you're talking about the same tool and the same thing. So I think it has to be covered, and that has to be decided in the use policy. So we just had the example of the ring cameras, and James' last meeting, that I missed the last discussion, a few weeks ago, you had mentioned fire department and drones, and I believe said something along the lines of, you know, you're fine with them using it for fire monitoring, but not for, you know, going out and just watching people, or there's a crowd and we're just going to send the drone to do other kinds of purposes with it, that there's a tool, and here's how we think that the city should use it, and other ways that the city should not use it. I think the same thing with ring cameras, you gave that example of, you know, we don't want any department or anyone just accessing someone's front door, looking into their neighbor's porch across the street at all times, anytime, for any reason, but that there are certain reasons. If there's an investigation and the person has given authorization to access it, and we're looking up something relevant to an investigation, that that would be allowed. But if you don't have that technology or that tool included, you can't distinguish it. So I just think that all of that distinction on how we're going to use something for an investigation or for mass surveillance is all dictated in the use policy for that individual technology, not in the big picture of doesn't count as surveillance, because it is the same thing, just depending on how you're using it. A drone can be a surveillance tool. It can be a tool for looking at the fire scene or a car accident scene before the first responders can get there, and what allowances are we in support of as a city, and which ones are we saying that we're not going to use it as? So I think that it needs to be included, and then that's all decided in the use policy. And, sorry, getting a little distracted here. I don't know if you're interested in just wrapping up this table of Oak Park to Urbana?
So, I want to talk a little bit about timing for a moment, because I do know that one of the differences between Oak Park and the one that you had worked on is the amount of time that it's open for discussion, for comments. So I think ours is, what, 60 and then 45 days, right? It has to be published 60 days before it's voted on, and I'm assuming that vote is not necessarily, like, it can go to committee before it goes to the final vote, and then 45 days open for the public, whereas Oak Parks is 30 days. And I'm just thinking, like, other things that we have, like, the annual budget, right? Our taxing thing, those are 30 days, public notice. If we're going to sell a piece of property, it's 30 days, so maybe speak to why we're doubling it for this.
I think just to give more time for input for people, that 30 days can be a little short by the time word-of-mouth spreads, and be sure that there is time to fully review all of the documents. Like, if there's the use policy in the use report, that those will be things that would need to have some time for input.
I don't know what other people think about the 60 versus the 30-day. James?
I think, I think in the current era, where information can be shared very quickly, I think being consistent with 30 days as we do with budget and other transactions of import is sufficient.
And then I was trying to find, I apologize, I read the Oak Park ordinance about two weeks ago. Did they specifically delineate between surveillance data? I thought that they primarily focused on surveillance technology.
I haven't gotten as into the details on theirs. What I do remember, we swiped from Oak Park, was their wording for the exemption for body-worn cameras, and they list the specific state statute. I think a lot of them were pretty similar, but I don't recall the nitty-gritties ones. I could pull it up if we wanted. And so we can, we can change the timing. Again, this is all discussion. I personally don't support reducing it to 30, but when we're at, you know, passing of it, people can feel free to make amendments, and the will of the majority of the council on some of those details.
And then if we're going back to, the other thing that I thought was a little complicated, and I mentioned this to you today, was for technology already in use before this ordinance, if it's passed, would be passed, in terms of the whole timing. So there's, so we have, at the moment, the proposal is 60 and 40 days, 45 days. But then for the items that are already, that are already in use, it was 120 days for them to get it, and does that then start the 60 days for review and the 45 days for? I was getting really turned around on all the, the timing of everything, so I was wondering if you could walk through what your thoughts were, your intent was with that.
Yeah, so some of my understanding for approving a new technology, there's that currently proposed at 60 days for council review and made publicly available. The 45 days is kind of within those 60 days, just saying that we have, like, a clear 45 days where it's very, we're open to comments about the use reports and use policy. And then, is it, Section 4 talks about what we do with existing technologies. So say something on this list that we currently use, and we want to put in a request to continue using, that is where, and refreshing my memory too, since it's been a couple weeks or months since we've talked about this in detail, 120 days of the passing of this ordinance for whatever department or exec is using such technology, have 120 days after we were to pass this ordinance. And there are options for extension with majority vote of council, up to two extensions if that's needed. And in that 120 days, we would have the use report and use policy, and then that's where that other 60 days comes in, to a total of 120 days of its submission to approve it. So it's kind of 120 days first to compile and create the use policy and use report for each technology, and then after 120 days of the passing of this ordinance, an additional 60 days for that public input period and council consideration, so a total of 180 days after the passage of this ordinance for approval by council, I believe. And if not approved by then, or given an official extension by majority vote, then that department would discontinue the use of that technology or database.
Okay, so it does, it does revert back to the 60 and the 45 days in the beginning?
Yes.
That's the intent at the moment?
Yes. But there's 120 days for the department to compile and create the proposed use policy for all the technologies.
Okay, all right. And then I think, you know, we did have a straw poll vote on this, but something else to be decided is whether or not this ordinance covers the police department, or it covers all departments within the city. And just based on conversations that Grace and I have had, it sounds to me like that's not something that she's willing to put in this ordinance, so that would be something that would have to be offered as an amendment if, any time that this is brought up, but Grace, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, I'd say I agree with that. I think especially because, I think hopefully we'll have some more agreement when we go through this actual list of things that we are using, and there may or may not be anything that's used by another department that we think does apply or we want to be covered under this ordinance. So I'm still open to the discussion. Like, if we go through and there's nothing on this list in any other department besides one, I think that makes sense. But I think we're not yet at that point, because there may be things used by other departments that should be covered under this, or the majority of council would like to be covered.
Chris?
This is for Darius. Darius, I was going through the list that you gave us on September 2nd, and particularly on the second page, you've got, and it, things are, like, mislabeled. In other words, you've got definitions of technologies that should have been for the next piece of technology. You'll see, if you read through it closely, it is, it's just a line drawn, and it's misdefined as you go, as you read through the list. Did anybody else notice that, or was it just me? But if you look at your paperwork, read each one, and you'll see, all of a sudden, and it's particularly on the second page, the technology is not the right, the definition of the technology and what it does isn't correct, and it's the next one that, that definition, you'll see what I mean. But look that over. It's not a big deal, but it is confusing, was confusing, anyway. Yeah, but if you look, we're definitely in the weeds here. Let me show you. If you read through these, and you'll see if you read them.
Yes, James?
Yeah, I will, you know, things like the timeline, I understand that can become an amendment or a discussion at the point where we're, like, down to brass tacks on passing the final ordinance. I am going to, one of the things I liked about the Oak Park ordinance was I thought it made clearer delineations of surveillance technology, which is the object of the ordinance, and data, which is a place where I'm really concerned that, I don't want this ordinance getting outside of what it's supposed to be about with regard to databases. I don't want to put the city, the operation of the city, into a context where the use of a particular database, because it has struck some people wrong, becomes invalidated and makes the business of the city hard to work. I think that's inherently the issue with mixing surveillance technology and databases, and just having that be databases unqualified, right? I think it has to be databases collected by surveillance technology. And so I'm going to, I'm going to push for that, because I think there's an opportunity to obstruct regular business of the city that is not the subject of what we're trying to address here, if it's not written correctly. So that's something I think we can, we can focus on. And that may just be the fact that some of the wording is not as careful as the wording in the definitions, right? I do think the definitions try to address that, but if you're reading through it, there are places where I don't think it's that clear. And so that's something that I will try to provide direct feedback on, how to fix that. One thing I do want to say, and Grace, you may have seen this on, on the meeting, is I do think it would be important, as a part of this ordinance or another way, to have a commitment on the city's behalf to disclose the data that they keep and how it's intended to be used, as opposed to necessarily an approval process for the data that they collect and keep. I think disclosure is a very important situation here, because then if something does feel like it's on the line and uncomfortable, we can have constituents or council members say, oh, this disclosure makes it look like this is on the gray line of what we were trying to figure out, and we can, we can, you know, review that. But I, I think, I think there's still an issue with the generality of databases, and in this current world, that is too widespread without defining it better and being consistent in the language you use on it.
Grace?
Thank you. Definitely hear that point, and do want to clarify that our, the current proposed definition of surveillance data is from data that is collected, captured, detected, recorded, retained, processed, intercepted, or analyzed by surveillance technology. So that's, that's in the Urbana definition and the proposed ordinance, that it's not any data. It is data that is not only captured by surveillance technology, but also could be captured, detected, recorded, or analyzed. What I'm thinking of here is, like, facial recognition. recognition databases, that maybe it wasn't a license plate camera that took the picture. Maybe they took pictures off of Facebook or whatever publicly available platform, but then they put it into a database, which, under our definition of surveillance technology, because it is, that would be software that has biometric capability that is specifically associated or capable of being associated with an individual. So that's why, under the current language, it would fall under surveillance technology and would be a surveillance database. Because now you've enabled it with biometric data. And so it's not just, you know, from a license plate reader, but wherever the information's coming from. But then if you enable it with personally identifiable information, that's where it's, becomes more surveillancy.
James?
Yeah, I would say in that case, the tool that's being used to analyze the data is the surveillance technology. And I would also say that biometric data is actually regulated by the state, as far as what you can collect without disclosing it to individuals. And so that's covered by state law. I just think there are places in the language currently that, where the word database is used, where it could say surveillance database, and it would be clear that, that we've narrowed it to that concept. Does that make sense?
Like in the language throughout the ordinance?
Yeah.
Where it says surveillance technology and databases, you say surveillance technology and surveillance databases would be more clear?
Maybe I'm splitting hairs, I'm sorry, but, but.
No, it makes sense, yeah.
But, you know.
It makes, it makes sense.
You read it one way and somebody else reads it another way.
Data's tricky.
That would, that would help, yes. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that.
Questions?
Makes sense. And yeah, it doesn't, you know, change the, the bulk meaning behind it, but could help clarify for future generations of council, yeah. Not sure if you saw, I scrolled to the end of this list. Not sure if there's anything else we wanted to see. One thing that Oak Park has that we do not is about employees or officers knowingly violating the ordinance and what happens then, which there were some ideas of that in some earlier versions in our Urbana ordinance. And I think with discussions with the city attorney, that there were some issues in what was proposed originally. Kind of, yeah, up to us if we wanted to, if we wanted to consider adding any language to that effect, but not as specific as I was originally proposing.
Well, I think the FOP contract has the language for discipline. And we in Urbana have left it to the police chief to administer discipline after an administrative review. And I, when I say administrative, I mean city administrator. So that is where we stand now.
I, I did like that Oak Park specifically said that the report will be put on the website. I think that's something that we can add to this. I, I realize that it would be, the report, if it's given to city council, would be in the public packet, but then you're digging into meeting notes and so forth. So it's just more clear cut if it's on the UPD webpage.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. We could consider adding that. And then I'm not sure how we want to go for next steps. I would propose, if there's interest and people still have energy and attention, we could kind of go through some of these sections because I think that we, I think we're in general agreement on a lot of the main bulk of the ordinance and kind of procedures here. And we could highlight things that we might want to consider, maybe a number of days we want to change. But I think it would be great if we could get to a place of kind of general agreement or understanding where there is disagreement. And then next phase, moving into that more specific definitions and the actual technologies.
There was, there was one point in the whereas that I was, I thought was pretty broad. Let's see here. Can you scroll up a little bit more? Yes, keep going, sorry. The whereas is a long, here we go. It's this whereas in the middle, is the Urbana City Council and the city's responsibility to legislate matters of public safety and accountability to the public and any use or expense of surveillance technologies or major systems regarding public safety required due to public process and approval. It's, it's a very long way of saying, this says to me that we legislate all matters of public safety. And I'm, I'm asking, is that what your intent is? That's how this reads to me.
I think so. And then that more specifically, that matters of public safety and general accountability, and that specifically, when it comes to surveillance technology, and that, you know, the other whereas is kind of getting to, and that we don't have a policy and we don't have any mechanism in place for the council or the government body to regulate or approve surveillance technology.
Well, Mary Alice, are you thinking of like, the city council doesn't legislate all the matters of public safety?
Correct.
The state does, right?
Well, there's lots of entities that do.
And the federal does. Yeah, right. I mean, and there are a host of, yeah, of other entities that do that. I would recommend then can legislate, that we're empowered to, you know, make policies regarding our public safety in addition to all the other entities that do it. The word can kind of just enabling us.
May?
Or, yeah, or may, yeah.
May legislate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not a shall.
It's not a shall, it's a may. Yeah, and I think I'm, I'm imputing shall into this language. I think that's the, that's the issue. So it's the may. May legislate matters. I'd just get rid of, and any use of expensive surveillance technology or major systems. Actually, we'd get rid of that piece because all the other stuff talks about that, right? This whereas is specifically talking about the power of the city council and the city versus all these other things are talking about specifically about surveillance technology and the need to have a public process and review of that. It's like.
So what would you propose? Eliminate the whereas or starting at the and any use?
I would, yeah, I would just, I would just get rid of and any use. And then I would put may between to and legislate. And city's responsible, let's see here, is, and the city's responsibility, and get rid of the to, may legislate matters of public safety and accountability, instead of to. Does that read right?
I don't think so. Not responsibility, may legislate, does that?
No, it doesn't.
I said can, but already been empowered to do it.
And again, the whereas as being, you know, non-binding, I think is still important, but not any hills I'm willing to die on. Like, we could, we get rid of the whole whereas clause and move on. As far as I'm concerned, I wouldn't fight that.
Or, you know, city can assume responsibility.
Yeah, I, we, we don't have to spend too much time on this. I can, I can look at this again. Ah, yeah. You could just delete the whole whereas, take the black and put it in front of the, the whereas below.
Okay, yeah, maybe, we could consider combining those or eliminating all or part of this one. I would propose maybe we individually think about the grammatical.
Sure.
Mechanics of that one.
Yep, 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 yep.
And come back to it. Was there anything else in the whereas clauses that we wanted to talk about or had any potential differences of opinions on? A lot of these are kind of just citing, you know, basic home rule stuff, reiterating what we've already said in our commitment to sanctuary cities and ten shared principles, talking about civil liberties. Then I can keep scrolling. So our, section one is just the purpose. Hopefully that one's okay. This was recommended to be added by our city attorney. And I think especially is starting to get us a little closer to a city code format that I think we might eventually just reformat it into. And section two is that approval process that we already fortunately had some good discussion on how that would work. So that, you know, currently as written is any city department may change to a specific department that's seeking to acquire or use new surveillance technology or, ooh, that one does say surveillance data.
So here, I think, is, is an area that perhaps James was referring to in the, which we have, which includes linking or cross-referencing existing databases in A, which is like the last sentence. This is where it's getting a little muddy in terms of the fact that those existing databases, that data has to come from the surveillance technology. But this speaks to broader, to me, than, than that component of coming directly from surveillance data. I, I feel like we need to work on this part here. And now we're getting into the weeds of building a database.
Yeah, and I think that it's, what it's trying to get at is when a non-surveillance database becomes a surveillance database.
But the only way a non-surveillance, that's not from surveillance technology, so it can't become a surveillance database.
It can, depending on the definition of surveillance technology. Because again, it's not just this camera. It could be, it could be, you know, like you said, the photos of the facial recognition that like.
But it's, the photo is not surveillance technology. It's the use of photo recognition software that is the technology, right?
Yes, because that's also the software. So it's not just hardware, but it can be that processing software that is the surveillance technology.
But it's not, it's not like if I have, if I have an employee file of everybody at Public Works and I have all their pictures online, right? That's, that's data that we have, but it's not anything that would be covered here, right?
I, I don't think so. But again, we need to decide that when we get into the definitions piece.
But if I want to do facial recognition, let's say we have, I don't know, cameras at the doors to let the people in Public Works into the, into the thing. Now I'm using facial recognition technology and I'm leveraging this database of photos. Now it is surveillance technology, but by themselves, they're not. So that's why I'm saying, it has to have that added component of surveillance technology for it to be included here.
Yeah, and I think that's what this is trying to get at. So like if we had, say, a camera at an intersection that's used for traffic monitoring, that is anonymous aggregate data, and then, so that's not defined as our surveillance data or technology. But then that becomes enabled with facial recognition or biometric eyeball retina ID or something.
But that's surveillance technology.
Exactly. So I think that's what this is trying to get at, is when a non-surveillance database becomes equipped with new tools or capabilities that then make it into surveillance data.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
But then, like, as we said, that technology software with the facial recognition is the surveillance technology that this data is coming from.
Right. So I, I, I think this is too broad, the way it's written. I think it needs to be retooled. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I think so. I, I think we can narrow it down. Are we in agreement on that kind of piece that that's what it's getting at? I think it's trying to say like something that's not surveillance technology or database, but then label later becomes that kind of thing by either cross-referencing with other surveillance databases, might be more helpful to put together, or new tools, so that now it crosses over to surveillance data.
It's all the tools, yes. I agree. It's the tools.
Yeah, so it says we're using new analytic tools on an existing database.
Or using new analytic tools. It's an and, right? It doesn't, this is all about the actual technology. Because if you go through the technology, any kind of use would have to be approved. And I, and, and one thing we can look at, and I don't remember if it's in here, but any kind of data that's stored using that surveillance technology needs to be approved. That would make sense to me. But I'm not sure if that, I, I can't remember the.
Differentiation.
Yeah.
Is your mic on? Sorry.
Sorry, my mic is not on. I, I'm agreeing with Mary Alice's approach to revisiting this because it's not the, it's not the data necessarily that makes it the issue. And because it's an or here, that's the challenge. If it, if it's strictly about using a new technology that interprets data that we already have in a way that is considered surveillance, that's, that's what we should be concerned with.
Right.
But, but not, I mean, that's like, I'll, I'll use an example of things that are expressly in the list. There's a, there's a, there's information in there about, you know, dedicated cameras like to cover the entrance of a building are in there as an exclusion. But if those things are recording and then you do processing on it with surveillance technology, then it becomes something that you're worried about. But as it's sitting there, resting there as the closed circuit camera on people coming and going from a particular door, that's not what we're looking at. What we're looking at, that, that data in itself is not.
Correct.
Surveillance technology collected data for the purpose of that kind of analysis. It's data at rest that a new technology is turning into a surveillance component. And I understand that that, to many people, that will feel like splitting hairs. But in the world that we live in, the tools that you're using are the things that either create an issue or make data into something that it wasn't originally gathered for. And that's what we should be focusing on. And it's the or in here that, that opens that door to the information on permits that people have requested could be analyzed in a certain way to, to turn, you know, figure out something that's going on that we've learned later is an indicator for whatever thing. It's not those permits or the resting data on those permits that's the risk. It's the tool that's used to interpret it. And if we can focus on that, then I'm going to be comfortable.
I think I'm still not completely understanding, but be happy to take suggestions on language if you want to think about what would make it more clear for a future discussion. I have some little notes here. Is it getting closer of saying those changes which, you know, those things which change the database to surveillance data? Is there a problem with the cross-linking in new categories? Because you could do that without it becoming surveillance necessarily.
I can think about how to word this.
Okay. So maybe we can.
Yeah.
Think about that one and have, come back to it.
Question two.
Yeah, so that's two A. Because I think we kind of agree on the same point, just kind of what, what is that point and how do we word it, right? And then B, as we talked about, is that 60-day period for approval. We could consider shortening it with amendment and agreement from a majority of council. And then 45 days where we're kind of open to formal comments, which, we didn't really clarify a mechanism. I think Oak Parks does say like formal written comments to the clerk. That seemed a little more gatekeep-y than our kind of open-ended, people can show up, they can email us, they can have different forms to reach out.
So, so, and, and once again, I'm sorry, I keep harping on this, but if we look at section 3A, when we go to, when evaluating a request for the use of surveillance technology or a database, right? Then you're like, because I think, at the end of the day, we want to, we're concerned with surveillance technology and what data is it storing. At the end of the day, that's the concern, right? So I, I feel like maybe that's why Oak Park had such a heavy hand with just surveillance technology and not the surveillance database, because that database is tied into that technology. That's just my thought.
Yeah, I think they can be, right? Like with license plate readers, like the photos are generated from the tool itself. But as we talked about, maybe the like state facial recognition ones, maybe the state didn't take all those photos themselves, but they got them from DMV and passports and other Facebook, other inputs that they have. And then with facial recognition, that becomes a surveillance software tool, even though the physical hardware that captured those pieces of. even though the physical hardware that captured those pieces of information might not be. And I definitely hear you with adding surveillance database. And I'm happy to look into that or anyone else. That was my intent. I think we just got a lot of words, especially when we changed it to like policing surveillance technology. And it got kind of long. So I think that was implied there, but we can definitely add surveillance database to clarify.
Yeah.
Yes, like put here, yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes sense and that was my intent. I think I was just saving us a few words, but it's not as clear. In this section three, the standards for approval, I think we've already kind of reviewed this. These were some of James' recommendations on the specific points there on what council may consider. We already had a discussion and changed that to a may from a shall. If we're good on that one. Section four was the reporting of existing surveillance technologies and well, surveillance databases. And this is what we already briefly touched on previously as well, that for existing things after the passage of this ordinance, there would be 120 days for the departments to write a policy and report for each technology or surveillance database in 120 days, with some options for extensions. And then final approval for council with another 60 days unless otherwise extended. And then also that point is saying that during that period, while we're working on approving these things, that any contracts wouldn't be extended or renewed. But, you know, there's nothing that says that they would have to just continue use. I think that the, the unspoken thing here is that they would continue to use any of these technologies while we're putting together the report and policy for approval.
So I want to talk about that. What is that, four, this number four? During the period of continued use is not approved. So that's, that, is that it, the 180, that is the 120 days?
Yes, actually the 180. So by the time
Right, but it's
this ordinance passed and we approved everything that we had already previously been using.
So by default, we're saying that nothing is approved. If, when we pass this ordinance, nothing is for approved use. However, if there's something that is working that falls under these definitions, you can only use it for 180 days max unless there's two extensions. And if your contract runs out, let's say in 60 days, you're not allowed to renew it. Is that correct?
That's what the section four is saying, that they, any department would continue to use technologies because it's kind of in limbo. There's, can't say it's not allowed, but while we're
Hasn't gone through the process.
While we're working on, yeah, going through the process. But that we wouldn't renew or extend any contracts that would put us beyond that 180 days. I think so it couldn't be, well, we already renewed a contract to use this thing for the next 10 years, but it wasn't approved yet in that time period. I think is kind of what it's trying to avoid, is committing ourselves to contracts to extend something when it hasn't yet been approved.
All right, so.
I think the, if the, if the language for four was updated to say during the period that continue, while continued use has not been approved, you can't renew it. It's not saying you can't use it. It's just saying until you've gotten it approved, you can't artificially extend the
Right.
time that we're committed to buying that service or using that product.
And, and, and that, that makes sense to me.
At least that's how I read that, not the way
I guess my only concern is timing, but it might be moot, right? It might be like, we don't have, we don't have any contracts that are coming up due in the next. So it might not mean anything at all. I'm just worried about that kind of gray area where you fall in, oh, annual renewal is on April 1st and this passed on February 1st. And so now what do we do? Like how quickly? And that's, that's also where I was getting into the 120 days. And then you start the 60-day process and then you start the 45-day process. And so I was trying to line up all the timelines and it was getting a little complicated, so.
So happy to take recommended language changes if we think about it. But I think maybe that was just a understanding one.
Yeah, I just think a tweak on four, the language on four would make that more clear. I don't have the suggestion yet, but.
I'm just kind of putting things in red and I'll try and remember to get this back on my flash drive and send it out. That these aren't additions, just things we're highlighting. I think it was mostly that first part of it, right? And then we should probably technically put like unless otherwise extended or something here. But I think it's kind of implied within this whole process, but we could put it in there. And then section five is about contractual agreements. Saying that except allowed in here, we'll have approval for contractual agreements, including NDAs that are shared with council.
So there's no mechanism here, not that I want to put any kind of, there's no mechanism if somebody gives out information that they shouldn't be giving out. An NDA is non-disclosure agreement, right? And so right now it's being provided to city council members, unredacted copy of any contract, which is interesting to me, and NDAs. Are there redacted contracts that are given to us?
I think there could be. I think that this is taken from examples of specific surveillance companies that have NDAs in their contracting, where it's the, it's kind of saying that the company is not going to disclose how they're using the data or where they're sharing it. So it's that kind of a thing that they have written into their contract that they will not disclose how they're storing, using the data. And that that's, that's been an issue with quite a few of the commonly-used surveillance technologies.
Yeah, and I guess what I'm saying here is if we're given unredacted copies of the, of a contract, I'm assuming there's some kind of confidentiality there. That's why it's been redacted. But if city council's been given unredacted, then the assumption is, is that there's some confidential information in there.
It could. I think this word was added later just to say that, just to clarify that we want the complete contracted agreement.
Can we just say that? Prior to approval, the city department shall provide all members of city council with a complete contract?
I think so. Put that in some of our notes. Because, yeah, I agree, I wouldn't expect that things would be redacted necessarily. But I think it's just to avoid that a company doesn't say, okay, well, here's the contract and here's half of it blacked out because it's confidential and it's our NDA information and you don't get to know about it even though we're signing to agree on it. But I think complete encompasses that just fine. Let me keep scrolling. And this section C is what we talked about in the table, just that the city will not sell our information to outside entities for our own monetary gain.
But it says it facilitates the receipt, which means we get information.
Yeah, here's the thing is for monetary or other form of consideration.
Basically what you're trying to convey here is we won't sell the data.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
I think it would be good if we just said, we won't sell the data.
Yeah, we definitely can. We can now put section 5C on the list. I think it's a balance of having clear language, having it specific, and then also having it pass the lawyer-y language and what all it needs to entail. So there have been quite a few lawyers that have collaborated on this and I've been trying to balance some of those things myself. Yeah, essentially this is trying to say that we won't sell
That's what it is. I would just say the mayor, the city, not the city department, not the mayor's office, the city will not sell data. Yes, James?
Yeah, this may get back to the, the question about disclosure. Whether we, I don't want to delay what we're doing here, but it, it might be meaningful to have a companion ordinance on disclosure and commitment to not sell data in general for the city as an overarching philosophy. Now, I don't know. I may find out that we make a lot of, Elizabeth's not here, that we make a lot of money selling a particular kind of data and that, that would have a budgetary implication. But I don't think so.
A lot of our data's open.
And I would, I would rest more comfortably as a citizen if my city said, you know, I'm going to show you the data I keep and why I keep it. And I'm not going to sell any of it to, for profit. Just in general. Whether it's surveillance data or any data.
Yep, I agree. Grace?
Thanks. Happy to continue going through here, but had a thought on that of James' idea of having a general policy on not selling data. And I think that makes sense. And another thing, I might be jumping the gun, but I will just throw out there and had mentioned to Mary Alice earlier with the, the definitions. And so I do want to maybe finish this up first, but I, it connects with that general policy. I think, well, when, I think we might get to a point in the definitions where there are publicly accessible, open-source searches like Facebook and Google and LinkedIn and a lot of things on the list, that maybe we don't need to have a specific use policy on. Maybe they don't fall under our definitions nicely, but maybe they're still, they're still a tool. And so maybe having even a general policy for saying, you know, city employees, representatives, officials will use any available tools for a city, like official business related to their job, not for their own personal gain, not to intentionally harm others, just those kinds of general policies that I think could also cover a lot of those things. Because you can abuse it. You could abuse Facebook or Google for your own personal gain. But also, do we need to have a whole policy on that when it is publicly available? Or are some of these better covered under a general policy of city conduct? I don't know if you want me, if we can continue?
I mean, that makes sense to me to have those. We, we were talking last week because there's things on here like LinkedIn and YouTube and Google and so forth. It makes sense to me to just have a overall policy that's not related to this. I'm assuming that all employees use Google for different searches of different items, of people, of things, of what have you. Yeah. So that would be separate, I guess is what I'm saying, from this. Is that your understanding? We don't have to tie it in with this whole surveillance ordinance?
I think, yeah, I agree, not necessarily. But when we get to the definitions, I think something like that might be important to keep in mind, that there will still likely be things that we think do fall under this and we do need a whole use policy for this one thing. But there might be a whole category of stuff we can put in this bucket and say, this falls in this kind of not-quite-surveillance-technology-or-surveillance-database-area. But we do realize that it is a tool that has a lot of power and falls just under, yeah, that general policy rather than specifically here. If we want to just continue getting through some of these sections, we're almost there. Section, section six is the exigent circumstances for emergencies. If there were an emergency, then there would be a 30-day period for a department to use surveillance technology or surveillance database without approval from council, but just approval from the mayor or their designee that could be continued, extended up to no more than two consecutive periods. And the thought there just being that after 90 days, it starts to become more of a long-term thing and not a short-term emergency situation. And then the rest of this section is kind of just going over the procedures for that. So after the end of the circumstance, there would be a report submitted to council after 30 days following that situation. And then they would still submit a use report following the situation and that would still be included in the annual report. And then I think four, I was trying to refresh my memory. I think it's just about the extensions of 30 days, no more than two. And when I, when we were peeking in the definitions, I believe Matt, our city attorney, did not like what we referenced in the city code as an emergency situation. I don't know if you had time or would still like to think about how we could better define an emergency situation.
My recollection of that discussion, and Grace, if you could scroll to that. Yeah, there you are, okay. A couple of things. The, the current, chapter six references a, a state law that has been replaced with a more current iteration of a, a law relating to, you know, emergencies and declarations of emergencies and statewide disasters. And it includes really only those larger events. And this is a very broad stroke, but situations where an emergency would be declared locally by the mayor or statewide by the governor. So the, the pass-through reference in chapter six references the old state law pertaining to those items. So obviously COVID is the most recent example of, of that in our memories. But it's, it essentially references larger, broader, rarer events than other, some of the other versions of this ordinance that we've seen from other communities. So it would occur less likely, would be one, one of the practical instances. The primary issue that I had with it is it's referencing outdated state law. So we'd simply need to update the code. If we stuck with this sort of definition or perspective on what an exigent circumstance is or should be in order for these exceptions to apply, we would need to just update the reference to state law and city code or just reference the law directly.
Thank you. Yeah, I think any of those options make sense. I think the intent there was just, so we already kind of define, you know, involving danger of death, physical injury, or significant property loss or damage that would render it impractical to obtain a warrant. And, you know, we could just leave it as that. We don't necessarily need it. I think the point here was just trying to further define what is an emergency circumstance and looking towards other definitions in state and federal law or even in our local code. But it seems like the issue is our code itself needing to be updated. So I think we can consider that when we get there. Okay, sorry, still under exigent circumstances?
For a second, for exigent circumstances, I just want to. Okay, so let's see here. The maximum amount of time that a department can use something that's not already approved, that falls in this extenuating circumstances would be 90 days if they got two consecutive. Is that correct?
Yes, I think so. 30 days and then not more than two consecutive 30 days would be 90 total, max, yeah.
So if they, if, if somebody had a piece of software for 30 days, then the clock for the 60-day would start at the end of that first 30 days?
For approval?
Yes.
I think it could, and I think it doesn't say anywhere that it couldn't. And I think that is the idea here in my mind, is that if we're using something on an emergency temporary basis, you know, hopefully 30 days is enough. If not, then another extension. And that, that could be in parallel to having the approval process happening.
Right, but if we change the approval process to be 30 days? Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure I was reading that right.
And the other one, just making it publicly available of what we've used. And just saying that that may be redacted to comply with court orders or to exclude reasonable discretion information relating to an ongoing investigation or other public safety risk, but that otherwise an information will be included in the next annual use, or in the next annual report. And then the C one is just a detailed part about being able to add a technical patch or upgrade with the mayor's approval. And then, then they or upgrade with the mayor's approval, and then they need to go through the full approval process.
Okay, so the purpose of this is to ensure that our infrastructure is safe, right? There's no IT hacks, right? So shall we just say nothing in this ordinance should prevent the city from implementing necessary patches, technical and security patches, to ensure cybersecurity of the city's infrastructure and just leave it at that? Well, I think your part is, is that if that upgrade gives them new capabilities, right? But those new capabilities aren't approved, and that's already covered. Just because it's there doesn't mean they can use it because we haven't approved it. So I feel like the heart of this is we want to ensure that there's no ability, no cyber... no cybersecurity threat. That's the heart of it.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I think, see, your point that either if the patch or upgrade changes it to be now a surveillance database, then it would need to be approved anyway.
Yeah.
And it could go through the regular exigent circumstances anyway.
Right.
So, yeah, I think we could do away with it. I'll try and remember, too, if there was some more intent to this. I don't... I'm not reading if it's... It doesn't look like it's talking about specifically during that exigent circumstance for an upgrade. So anyway, we could consider that. That's 6C.
I think keeping C is okay. I just think the part after the first sentence can be... You can put that in red for possible renewal because it's already covered by the requirement to get approval. Do you think what it says in the first sentence is important to say? That the extra part is overly complicating something that's already covered?
Yeah, I think we can maybe think about that one. I think that it was getting at saying that, you know, you could do the upgrade for a security reason, but like we were saying with the example of, you know, streetlights now with... or street cameras now with facial recognition, saying that we wouldn't use that new surveillance capabilities until they were approved, although we could do a technical upgrade if that's needed for security reasons, I think is how this one's kind of splitting hairs. But I agree, I don't think that it's the highest priority. Scroll on unless we're still reading. Get back to that one.
Yeah, I'll scroll.
Then 7 is the deletion, destruction, that we had already talked about, saying for unauthorized or unapproved technologies, and that that record would be deleted as soon as possible in accordance with other laws and not if requested for criminal defense. And then Section 8 is... So this one has changed a little bit because in the previous version, there was that wording from ACLU that created a whole new commission for oversight of this ordinance, and that's not necessarily what I'm proposing or what was written in the Urbana ordinance, just kind of as a reference there. This is similar to what we've seen in other versions. I think I just changed up the order and removed the ACLU example. So now what Section 8 is saying is that, in A, is that the CPRB, Civilian Police Review Board, would review the annual report, use report, and the use policy with a vote for recommendation before moving to committee of the whole, just like we do with a lot of our other boards and commissions, that they have a recommendation that's not... You know, this one is a vote on a recommendation, not like it wouldn't be killed in CPRB, like the ZBA for some things, and then come to council. And that this could be happening during that 60-day period of notice ideally. And then B is that the CPRB and Human Rights Commission shall hear complaints made to their boards or commissions regarding surveillance technology or will add surveillance database subject to this ordinance and their own ordinances. And then C is just saying that upon request, representatives from council, CPRB, and Human Rights Commission shall be given full and open access to information relevant to this ordinance or complaints made in compliance with Open Meetings Act, city confidentiality, and other relevant state and federal laws.
So I'm worried about A. The reason I'm worried is because sometimes it's difficult to get quorum in CPRB, and so I'd like to propose changing the shall to a may for the A because of that reason. So that's just my proposal, but James, you had something?
I was just curious if B is necessary.
I don't think it's necessary.
I think it's true whether it's there or not. It's more instructive than permissive because I would assume that concerns about being surveilled by the police would go to the CPRB or might go to the Human Rights Commission in any case.
My understanding is only if there's an appeal, that the CPRB does not see all complaints. They only are an appeals board. So if someone complains about it, but there's no appeal to that complaint, CPRB would not see it. So I think that's the point here, is that even without an appeal, CPRB and HRC, I don't know if we do want to change a shall to a may there, but I think that's a pretty good oversight mechanism, and we have these boards here to do such work.
Do we really want two bodies to have this responsibility, or should it be... Should one be prioritized?
As written, it says complaints made to their board or commission, so I think it would be whichever one it were brought to. But I think that that doesn't encompass, you know, if a complaint's brought to the department rather than a commission. So I think that there's definitely... Can still be some work here in the wording and the idea behind it.
So does this mean that the CPRB and the Human Rights Commission have to set up some kind of complaint forum for things, for people to submit to them? Is that what this says? Or does this mean that people can come to their meetings and during public comment, talk about their concerns?
I'm not very familiar with the complaint process. My understanding is we have an online form for the police department. I'm not sure about if the commissions receive complaints directly. I think that we could definitely have some more information on that. A member of the CPRB was pivotal in helping draft some of this, so I think we could also have a discussion with the board or representative.
Yeah, I think B and C need a little bit of thought process behind it. It might require us changing ordinances in terms of what those boards do. So I feel like having A in there would be fine, but I think we should pull aside B and C for the moment while we work through all the other processes. That's just my opinion.
Makes sense. I think we can definitely think about these, or at least say that the CPRB would hear all complaints in relation to this ordinance and not just appeals. I think that's one of the main practical kind of things here.
But we have to change the ordinance for the CPRB in order for that to work?
Yes, which we've been meaning to do for five years or more anyway.
Which is why I'm saying, let's put B and C aside until we work on the updates for the ordinance for the CPRB.
Yeah, and I think that's something to look into also, how those line up in parallel. So that's something we've been talking to CPRB representatives and city attorney on how we can align those, and I don't know that necessarily if it's not in their ordinance, if they couldn't do it, or if those need to be in parallel or one before the other necessarily. So happy to have more information on that for sure.
All right, moving on. Grace, my goal is to, like, stop at the definitions.
Yep, sure.
So I think we've made it through some of...
Yeah.
Does that sound like a good stopping point for everyone? Okay, all right. Thank you, Grace, for making progress.
Thank you.
Good job, Grace.
Now, I've lost my agenda. I think the next one, yeah, yep, yep. All right, back to regular agenda here. The last item on our agenda is council input and communications. Mayor?
I'll have... I'll kick it off if that's all right.
Please.
I want to speak directly to the very tragic and unfortunate event that took place last week in Utah. In the aftermath, a city of Urbana employee posted an insensitive comment on their personal social media, using their own device, on their own time. But I want to make something clear, that their words do not reflect the values of this city or my own. This incident exposed a deeper issue. Our city's social media policy is over 15 years old and badly outdated. It doesn't reflect today's legal protections for public employees or the realities of modern digital discourse. I've made it a priority to update this policy, working closely with our city attorney, HR team, and communication staff. Our goal is to, you know, it's simple, to protect employees' lawful right to free speech while ensuring we uphold the standards our community expects and deserves from their public servants. As a husband and father, I can fathom the pain, you know, that last week's lost cause, the victims' families. I regret that, you know, anything associated with the city, you know, may have deepened, you know, some of that hurt. The city of Urbana does not and will not condone violence or threats under any circumstances, you know, especially under this administration. So, you know, I just want to say thank you for, you know, to the public for understanding as we navigate this situation moving forward. I do want to stress to, you know, to the media and other folks, I will not be responding to questions or discussing the personnel matter further after this time. So just want to say, you know, thank you again.
Thank you. James?
Yeah, I want to thank the mayor and city staff for putting on the Philo Road Ahead program last weekend, a week ago. I want to thank Chris and Grace and Jaya and Mary Alice for being on hand for that. I do think it was something we have seen when the Silverhearts group would do street parties in that neighborhood. People came out, people engaged. There were a number of conversations about the hopes and dreams and interests of this neighborhood and this area. People were engaged, and that's no surprise to me at all for that area and that participation. What it has highlighted is that it was a lot of effort, but a focus like that on a regular basis in that space can help create community. That... I know that was the goal of Silverhearts all along with the Silverwood neighborhood as they named it, but I do appreciate all the effort that went into it, and I do appreciate the community for coming out and sharing their thoughts with us.
Grace?
Thank you. Definitely, yeah, echo the thanks for those who organized and came out and shared their thoughts on South Philo Road, and definitely looking forward to continued conversations and activation in that area, working with our community partners and hopefully new ones as well. Will say that I agree with what was brought up about considering a city policy on how we handle executive orders and flag staffing. I think it's important that we don't condone physical violence and also not condone and support hateful rhetoric and harmful political division. So I think there's a balance there, and I would be curious in evaluating our policy to be in line with the city's values on when we acknowledge things like that. Also did want to just mention to keep the ideas going about our current budget, that we did have the $200,000 for relocation for victims of violence, and would love to see that process outlined and started moving. And then the same thing with immigrant services slash sanctuary services, especially in line with our Welcome Week proclamation. I've had some initial conversations and some kinds of ideas, but I'm definitely looking forward to working with the whole system and the city here in deciding how we're going to allocate that money because we do have that in the budget for this year, and would love to see that getting out as soon as possible. Thank you.
All right. Chris, will you take the chair for a moment?
I'm Mary Alice.
Thank you. All right. With no further business before this board, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.